Good evening. If everyone could please make sure your cellphones are on silent. And we will get started with our December 14th City Council meeting at 6:30 PM. Steve, could you please call the roll?
Councilman Callahan.
Here.
Councilman Pitts.
Here.
Councilman Reesey.
Here.
Mayor Forinton Zimmerman.
Here.
Mayor Miles.
Here. Thank you. First, I would like to start with an invocation. So this evening, I chose invocation prayer since this will be the last time that we meet before the New Year. So I thought it would be appropriate to have, even though it's a few weeks early, it will still be meaningful come the beginning of 2022. If we could all bow our heads or pray however you so like. Dear Lord, as the dawn breaks on our New Year, let us give thanks for all we hold dear, our health, our family, and our friends. Let us release our grudges, our anger, and our pains, for these are nothing but binding chains. Let us live each day in the most loving ways, the God-conscious way. Let us serve all who are in need, regardless of race, color, or creed. Let us keep God of our own understanding in our hearts and to chant God's name each day. Let us lead the world from darkness to light, from falsehood to truth, and from wrong to right. Let us remember that we are all one, embracing all, discriminating against none. May your year be filled with peace, prosperity, and love. May God's blessings shower upon you and bestow upon you, each of you, a bright, healthy, and peaceful New Year. Reverend Marcy Sherametta. Amen. Thank you. If you'd please stand and join me in the pledge. Ready, begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
The bug is behind you. There he goes. Got him.
First up on our agenda is the Villa Park Distinguished Citizen. And this year, we are showcasing, sorry, it's probably a bad word, we are highlighting a Villa Park family. So in the past, we've done a citizen, and this is actually seven of them. Seven? Seven. Seven of them. So the city of Villa Park is honored to recognize Elizabeth Fraser and her family. I didn't catch your husband's name. Mike. And they have five kids. And they are, in order of age, Max, who's 15, Fox, who is 12, Lucy, who is 10, Finn, who is 7, and Jude, who is 4. Elizabeth, who is a mom of five, decided last year to open a drive-through at her Villa Park home for people in need of a Thanksgiving meal, or perhaps just a moment to be surrounded by friendly faces. It brought them all so much joy that they did it again this year. They prepared and handed out almost 200 meals packed with all the fixings made completely from scratch, mashed potatoes, green bean casserole, turkey, cream of corn, pie, stuffing, rolls, and a little bottle of Martinelli sparkling cider. Elizabeth started prepping days before Thanksgiving and woke up in the dark morning hours on Thursday to get the bread rolls going before visitors started to arrive. Her kids, whose ages range from 15 to 4, helped in every step of the way. It is people like Elizabeth and her family who truly exhibit what holidays like Thanksgiving are all about. The Villa Park City Council would like to extend our gratitude to Elizabeth and her family, and we are proud to honor them as this month's distinguished citizens for their service to the community and dedication to helping others in need. So Mrs. Fraser, thank you very much, and your family. And I was wondering if you wouldn't mind coming up and giving us kind of how it all started. And just make sure on your microphone, you push the button to the little green light so that people that are watching at home will be able to hear your wonderful story.
There we go. Okay, so last year with COVID, we realized there were so many people that couldn't be with their families. And we were talking as a family, and I'm from a very abusive growing up, and so we don't have any relations with anybody in my family. And so my husband's parents live in Colorado, and he has a brother in London, New York, and we don't get to see them very often either. So we don't have family that we get to spend holidays with anyways. And we realized there was a huge need for people last year that weren't getting to be with family that typically get to. And so we thought, you know what? It actually started very selfishly because we felt sorry for ourselves. And we decided, there's so many people that hurt, whether it's financially or just their hearts are sad and they don't have the loved ones that they wish that they did. And that's what the holidays are supposed to be about. So we decided last year to just put it on Facebook and feed anybody that wanted to. And we fed just over 100 last year. And the kids, actually, it was their idea to do it this year again. So they were excited about doing it this year. We fed 196 people from our community. I didn't expect to learn as much as I did about the people in our community, but just through the windows of these cars, I learned people that had, you know, lost loved ones, people that had lost children, people that were having transplants that couldn't, I think it was a kidney transplant, is that right, Michael? A kidney transplant. So they couldn't even go to the store and get groceries. And some people were working and couldn't make food for their families, or, you know, just so many different things. And I realized we all hurt in different ways and at different times, and if we can see each other, our hurt is less. And that's what happened to us last year, is our hurt became so minimal by being able to be with these other people that also hurt. So the Villa Park Rotary donated a ginormous amount of money to help cover the food costs. And my kids helped peel potatoes and make the creamed corn and open cans of green beans and, you know, cream mushroom soup to make everything, put stickers that said homemade with love on all the containers and just helped package them. They did so much work, and I was so proud of them. So there's a couple of them that would love to just kind of say their favorite part?
Yes, we would love that. I was going to ask. If any of the Fraser children, you know, we'd love to hear from you. It's a great thing you guys did. Come on. Lucy, looks like Lucy's.
She's my only girl, and so she's right in the middle between all the boys. So she's my right-hand girl, huh?
Hi, Lucy. If you wouldn't just pull this down, it's movable so we can all hear you. So what was your favorite part?
I really enjoyed giving the people food and then noticing how grateful they were. And then I felt like I was really doing a good thing.
That's fantastic. Well, we really like that. And you warm our hearts. So do you think you'll do it again next year?
Yeah.
Very nice. How about Max? Hi, Max.
Hi. My favorite part was also just going out and delivering. It was fun to make the meals together and like sing and dance as we did it, but I especially enjoyed going out there and giving the meals. And yeah, they were very grateful, and it was good to see that and know that you were doing the right thing and helping a lot of people, and that made me feel good.
And so how long did it take you guys to clean up?
We, yeah, it took a while, but we had some people come and help, which was very helpful, and we got it done faster than we thought we would, so that was good.
Well, that's fantastic. Thank you again. That's awesome. And how about Fox?
I think that my favorite part was probably making the food. Well, not making the food, but like putting it into the packages. I did this with some friends, and it made it more fun.
Is there anybody that you want to say, you know, thanks for helping? Because I'm sure some of your buddies probably came over, right?
Yeah. My younger brother's babysitter named Holly came over.
Very nice. So you had the job to make sure everything got in the containers and made sure it looked really nice?
Yeah.
And that was the made with love part, right? So you had a big job.
Yep.
Awesome. Well, thank you.
No problem.
Did you get to eat something?
Yeah.
Is this Finn?
This is Finn.
Hi, Finn. Oh, and Jude. I think you got both.
Yeah, them both.
You got two hips. That's why God gave women two hips.
There you go. All right. Wow.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
What was your favorite part about doing all those Thanksgiving meals?
I liked giving the people the food and seeing them smile.
Yes.
Here, your turn.
I like giving the people the drinks and the food.
Aw, well, we appreciate you, all of you. So thank you very much. And we have a special pen that we give only to our distinguished citizens, that we want to give each one of the members of the Fraser family. So if you guys wouldn't mind coming up, we'll give you all a pen, and then you guys have to smile for a picture.
Hey, you are in, this is good. You're welcome. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you, guys. You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you. You're not that scared. I'm refer, Mrs. Fraser. Where do you want us to stand?
Make the round.
Yep.
I can use all this. I'm lucky here.
Come on in. You have a smile, dude.
Thank you all. Make it up.
That's our future city council there and that whole family. Five seats.
Okay, the presentations continue with Orange County Sheriff, but I believe they are out doing the flood.
Actually, I just received, they won't be making time, they just deactivated the EOC, but they're out there basically dealing with the floods and the canyons. So they won't make it back in time for the meeting.
Okay, then we move on to our OCFA, and this is Chief Ashby. Welcome. Got a hard act to follow.
I'm going to be honest with you, I'd prefer to follow the sheriff's department.
That is going to be a tough act to follow. Thank you again to the Fraser family. Very impressive. Good morning, or good evening, City Council and Mayor. Thanks for having me. My name's Colton Ashby. I'm the Battalion Chief currently serving the city of Villa Park today. Just a couple of quick stats as far as the city of Villa Park and the service that we provided since the last meeting back on October 26th. We've had a total of 188 units dispatched, 61 incidents within the city in the last month, 11 of those being structured fires. Our most prevalent call would be a fall or injury or trauma, with a total of 34 of those second to, or the second most being ill persons. And considering the time of year and what's going on currently, that's not surprising. Additionally, if you would indulge me just for a second, I'd like to give a brief little fire safety message. This time of year, you know, countrywide, we have nearly 10,000 residential fires caused each year by inappropriate or careless use of candles. Of that, some of the ways that we can alleviate the problems that we have with unintended candles and the fires and the trauma that they cause over the country primarily is to use battery-operated candles whenever possible. Always use candles at least 12 inches from anything that'll catch fire. And then, and this is probably the biggest and most important, make sure you extinguish your candles before you leave them. Don't leave them unattended. We have a lot of fires every year doing that. Secondly, I'd like to remind everybody that every year, we lose nationally about 860 homes due to decorations, excluding Christmas trees. So Christmas trees, everybody is in everybody's forefront as far as the cause of fires year later in the holidays, but also significant contributors, decorations on your Christmas trees and around your homes. So a couple items to keep track of this holiday season, never overload your extension cords or electrical outlets. Make sure your tree is at least three feet from any fireplaces, heats, vents, candles, or any other heat source. I think it's everybody in the county fire authorities wish that everybody has a safe holiday season, and we prefer not to see any of you, especially with any sort of trauma or fire or problem. So practicing these tips will keep us from seeing you this holiday season, and if we do see you, it'll hopefully be during a Christmas parade or with Santa Claus. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Council, any questions? Okay, now we have a special presentation from Cynthia Quimby, who is our representative for Southern California Edison. And I believe they have a PowerPoint. So welcome, Cynthia. Nice to see you.
Great to see you. Good evening, Mayor Miles, members of the council. My name is Cynthia Quimby, and I'm your Government Relations Manager for Southern California Edison. And I really appreciate the invitation to be here. I'm happy to be here in person. I started with the company about a year and a half ago and have been almost completely virtual, so really, really happy to be in Villa Park this evening. You know, I appreciate you all taking the time to invite us and to learn a little bit about the recent PSPS event that took place on November 25th and 26th. We look forward tonight to sharing a little bit about some of the challenges and opportunities here in Villa Park. And I want to just get started by saying, you know, that we recognize that, you know, the PSPS events that took place came at a very, very unfortunate time. We understand it put tremendous hardship on our customers. You know, many of them are getting together with their families, they're, you know, bought a lot of food, had a lot of preparations in place. And we absolutely recognize this and want to assure you that the decision to shut off power is not something that we take lightly. It's not something we want to do. We're in the business of keeping the lights on. So it's definitely something that, you know, we try not to do at any cost, particularly on Thanksgiving Day. But, you know, it was a decision that we had to make in order to manage the system that, you know, that day, there was very extreme weather conditions, and we had, you know, high winds, dry fuels. And so, you know, I just want to say, we do need to do better for our customers, and that's why our continued partnership and dialogue is very important, so we can continue to address these issues together for the residents. So this evening, just want to outline what we're going to talk about. We're going to first provide you with a little bit of an overview of when and why we use public safety power shut-offs, you know, what we're doing to upgrade our grid to lessen or even eliminate PSPS. And then we're going to talk about some of the services that we provide at Edison and that are available for your residents. And then I'm joined by my colleague, Bob Steens. He's here tonight. He's a senior advisor in our local Public Affairs Department, and he manages our wildfire and PSPS initiatives. And he'll be giving a little bit of an overview of the actual event that took place on Thanksgiving so that we can go through that as well. And then finally, we hope there'll be time for questions and feedback. Again, you know, we're here to listen. We really do want to hear your feedback, and we know we can do better, but the only way we can work together is to hear from you and from the residents as well. So with that, we'll go to the next slide. So first, you know, what you'll see here is a map of our service area, and you'll see that it's vast. Our service area covers 50,000 square miles, 27% of which is in high-fire-risk areas. And you'll see on the map, the red and the orange, you know, these are the high-fire-risk areas. Orange County has a lot of the red, and Villa Park in orange do as well. Next slide, please. So this is the different tenants of our wildfire mitigation plan. And, you know, I want to start by saying, our number-one priority at Edison is public safety. So, you know, our crews and our emergency management teams have been working hard to prepare and implement our wildfire mitigation plan. And it includes hardening our infrastructure by installing covered conductor, which is what basically is an insulation of our wires to make them less likely to spark if they come into contact with a foreign object. And so, you know, covered conductor has a couple of benefits. First, it gives us the ability to raise the wind speed thresholds to a level that will often prevent these shut-offs. And in instances where the winds do breach the higher thresholds, the PSPS event will actually be shorter. Next, the covered conductor also adds reliability benefits year-round by eliminating unplanned outages that result from objects like the Mylar balloons that can come into contact with our wires and shut off power when we're not planning to do so. So a couple of things specific to Villa Park. I wanted to let you know that the Qatar circuit, it was one of the circuits we were monitoring during this recent event. It didn't end up getting shut off. And we did do some hardening work on that circuit this year, so that very well may be why it didn't get shut off. And, you know, we are going to be doing some more work on the Qatar circuit this month. So I'm never going to say it will never happen again, but there's a very strong chance that that circuit will not even be under PSPS consideration next year. One of the other tools that we're using to reduce PSPS is we're, you know, using smart switching. And what this does is it actually isolates sections of the circuit, so in our high-fire-risk areas, so we can minimize the number of customers that are actually impacted, you know, when we have to implement these public safety power shut-offs. So we're looking at putting some switches on the Iran circuit, which goes through Villa Park also, and that is the circuit that was impacted on Thanksgiving. And this should help us to also mitigate some impacts in the year ahead. So just quickly, I want to go through the other components. We have, you know, in our plan, bolstering situational awareness by installing additional weather stations and wildfire cameras. And we also are enhancing our operational practices through vegetation management and equipment inspections. And then just wanted to mention, we do in Villa Park, there is one weather station that we have kind of in the northeast part of the city where we can monitor conditions in real time. So, and this is, of course, in addition, we have patrolmen that are actually constantly, you know, kind of surveying the lay of the land, particularly when we're having these wind events. So vegetation management's a big component as well, and I wanted to just let you know that in your city, in all of our service territory, actually, we do, you know, annual pruning and line clearance. That's done everywhere. Here in Villa Park, there are three grids, and we complete, we're just now completing the very last phase of the last grid. So we're wrapping up the routine maintenance for the year. And in 2022, we're actually going to be launching a pilot program, and Villa Park is going to benefit from it. And basically, the purpose of the program is to inspect for priority trees that pose a risk, and it'll be done about 90 days ahead of pre-inspections for our annual routine vegetation maintenance. So once these priority trees are identified, what will happen is we'll either pursue removing the tree or, you know, creating more clearance, you know, with our lines. And we'll work closely with Steve and make sure we're, you know, we're talking and, you know, working close consultation with you on that. And then, you know, the final tool you'll see up there, of course, is the public safety power shut-offs. And we know this is when we temporarily shut off power, and just want to make sure, you know, that everybody understands it is a tool of last resort. It's not, you know, our first choice. It's only done when we absolutely feel we have to do it to keep our customers safe and our community safe. And, you know, the purpose is to prevent our electric system from becoming the source of an ignition. That is the purpose. Next slide, please. So one thing we're committed to doing as well is providing, you know, strong communication when it comes to PSPS. And we've heard from our customers, there are a lot of things that we can be doing better, so we've been working really hard to actually improve our communications with our customers. And, you know, the communications do come before the event, during the event, and after the de-energization as well. So if, kind of the way the notifications work is if we determine that a PSPS event is necessary, we'll notify our public safety partners 72 hours in advance of when we're expecting to potentially shut off the power so that they can start to make their plans. And then we'll notify our customers 48 hours in advance. And then, you know, these notifications, I do want to mention, they come in a variety of languages. Customers can actually opt, you know, into what type of method of communication they like, whether it be a text, an email, a voice call. So all of that can be done by signing up on our website. And, you know, we also can provide alerts through our Nextdoor app. And one thing that I thought would be of interest to you all is, previously, when you signed up for alerts, it was by zip code. So this is unfortunate for the city of Villa Park because, you know, no matter where you are, you're going to get an alert if you're signed up for PSPS alerts. But we've just implemented a new feature where now you can sign up by your address so that you're only going to get a notification if you're actually potentially going to be impacted or are being impacted. And then, you know, again, working to try to make these notifications more clear. So, you know, one thing I would ask also is please, I would love any feedback that you all have. I know you probably are receiving some of these notifications. Please let us know how we can be doing better. We want to receive that feedback from you. Next slide, please. Okay. And then just quickly, I wanted to point out, we have a new outage map that we just launched, and it can be found at sce.comoutage. And this version's a big improvement. It actually will filter various types of outages, maintenance, repair, PSPS, by city. And you can enter in your address and see where the outages are for the whole city, all the different types of outages. And then, of course, for PSPS, you can actually put in your address and see if you're specifically being impacted. Next slide, please. So just a little bit about some of our customer care programs. This year, we have increased the resources that we provide to our at-risk customers for backup power. We've expanded our fully subsidized critical care backup battery program to support all customers who rely on, you know, electronic medical devices. And they have to be also enrolled in our medical baseline program. They have to live in an HFRA or high-fire-risk area, and they have to be enrolled in one of our income assistance programs for the fully subsidized. If you're not eligible for that, we also have a $500 rebate on a portable generator. And this rebate was recently expanded to include eligibility for all customers in our medical baseline program who are income-qualified. And then, want to also mention our 2-on-1 referral service. You know, this is something that we are using to make sure we're reaching out to our access and functional needs customers. During events, they'll also work with us to provide services like transportation, meal delivery, or lodging. Next slide, please. Okay. And then, we also have, you know, for all of our customers in high-fire-risk areas, a $200 rebate for portable generators that can be found on our website. And then we've increased our $50 rebate for power station batteries to $75. These are the small batteries that are good for, you know, charging your laptop or your cellphone. Next slide, please. Okay. And then, we also have, you know, for all of our customers in high-fire-risk areas, a $200 rebate for portable generators that can be found on our website. And then we've increased our $50 rebate for power station batteries to $75. These are the small batteries that are good for, you know, charging your laptop or your cellphone. Next slide, please. Okay. And then finally, I just wanted to let you all know that we are always looking for opportunities to engage our customers. And so, you know, if there was an opportunity to, you know, to meet with residents here in the city, you know, we'd always welcome opportunities to do that. Additionally, we do community forums of our own throughout the year. They've been mostly virtual since I've been with the company, but we do try to go out in person into communities, also doing a variety of different types of advertising, social media. So there are a lot of ways to receive information, and we're particularly interested in reaching out to our most vulnerable customers. So we work with community-based organizations as well. So again, that's another piece of feedback we'd love to have if there are opportunities to reach residents that you think need to receive this information. Next slide, please. And this just includes some of the resources that may be helpful for your residents. And with that, I'm going to invite my colleague, Bob Steens, to come up to talk specifically about the recent event. Thank you very much, and I'll be here for questions.
Thank you, Cynthia. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Cynthia, and good evening to the mayor, members of council. I was here, I was looking at my record, February of 2019, to talk about the public safety power shut-off program. As Cynthia mentioned, I help manage the program within Public Affairs. I am one of the, and one of the aspects is coordinating with, managing our outreach to cities, coordinating the outreach with our emergency response folks. We do a lot of work with the Orange County Office of Emergency Management. So, and actually, nice to get out and be out in the real I was here, I was looking at my record, February of 2019, to talk about the public safety power shut off program. As Cynthia mentioned, I help manage the program within Public Affairs. I am one of the, and one of the aspects is coordinating with, managing our outreach to cities, coordinating the outreach with our emergency, our emergency response folks. We have, do a lot of work with the Orange County Office of Emergency Management. So, and actually, nice to get out and, and be out in the real world once in a while instead of being locked up in my home office. So appreciate the opportunity to come here. And one of the other things I do is I am, for the public safety power shut offs, I am the, we form an, we have an incident management team to respond to those, and I'm the dedicated liaison officer for that. So I'm the one responsible for all the phone calls we get from local government officials and helping coordinate that. So on this last event, this was one of the largest widespread and highest wind events we've had in the last several years. Throughout our service territory, we wound up de, or turning power off, sorry, I try and go to, I try and avoid doing utility speak, but we turned power off for more than 100 circuits in our service territory, and that affected about 80,000 customers. So this was one of the, our largest events we've had as far as the public safety power shut off. For this particular circuit, and the map is up here, the Iran circuit, which serves Villa Park, it's in what is called, a, just a small portion of it is in what's called a high fire threat district. And those are defined by the California Public Utilities Commission. And it's really, and I, sort of between where that hash area is and the solid area, where those intersect is where that high fire risk area is. So on November 25th, the winds exceeded our, our de-energization thresholds. We had about 43 mile an hour winds, and I know that it's close, but the de-energization threshold is about 40, is 41 miles an hour. I know that sounds close, but it, we also use a tool that we call our, our fire potential index, which measures a whole bunch of things, wind speeds, humidity, fuel, fuel moisture content. And our criteria for, for turning the power off, or one of the criterias is F P I, or fire potential index of 12. And in this case, it was 13.2. So it did exceed our thresholds. Now, one, Cynthia talked about the notifications. This is one area where unfortunately, the winds exceeded what we had forecast. We have a team of meteorologists, we have about six or seven meteorologists on staff at Edison who are monitoring and using the various weather tools we have and weather sources. So we did, at the time, we did not expect the winds in this area to exceed the thresholds. And that lines up pretty much with the National Weather Service. So the winds, and it wasn't just in this area, yeah, throughout our service territory, came in higher than we, than we expected. So as Cynthia mentioned, normally, we'd be notified in the city and the county, the fire department, 72 hours in advance. And, and then the residents, 48 hours in advance. Unfortunately, again, we didn't, we're not able to meet that at this, at this time. So it was a very short notice, a little more than an hour that we gave. And again, that's something we, we don't want to have to happen. And after each one of these events, we go through and do what's called an after action, and look how we can improve that, how we can use the weather data to better be able to get notifications out. So as this map shows, as Cynthia mentioned, the various switches and segments we, we've put in, and that's been probably since I was here, two and a half years ago, we've put in a lot of switches on our equipment. So in this incidence, we were able to isolate or the Iran circuit in half, so that bottom part was not de-energized. And the top part was, again, because that's where it crosses that high fire risk area. So again, it's, it's unfortunate that we had to do that. We, I've talked to our, the folks that are operational folks, and we are going back and looking at that area. And we think we can do some work in that area and take advantage of some existing work to change those thresholds that, I can't say we won't do it again, because even when we put the covered conductor in, as Cynthia mentioned, that doesn't eliminate it, but it does raise the thresholds. And we're going through and actually doing the analysis right now for this last event. But for the event immediately before this, which did not impact the area, the grid hardening had a substant, was able to substantially reduce the number of customers that we de-energize. So again, you know, it's, this is not something we take lightly. In fact, this is unfortunately, the second year in a row that we've impacted Thanksgivings. Fortunately, with this rain we've had today, fire season is, you never say over, but it's, it's going to be a while before we have to do this again. And unfortunately, last year, some of our folks, we were de-energizing Christmas time, not, not Christmas Day, but close to it. So fortunately, this rain we've had last week and today and next week, you know, we are pretty much out of fire season for the foreseeable future. But again, as Cynthia mentioned, we, we learn each one of these events. We're going to go back and look at, you know, why weren't we able to project the weather? And again, it's a weather forecast. So why weren't, we need to do a better job at being able to forecast that. And again, we're taking a look at that particular segment of the circuit that does go over the high fire risk area and hope to be able to reduce, again, I could never say eliminate, but reduce the chance of doing a P S P S again in this area. So with that, I think Cynthia and I are happy to take questions.
Thank you. Council, do we have any guests? Go ahead. Can we turn the lights back on? Sorry.
I want to first thank both of you for coming here, standing before us and answering some of the tough questions to issues and deficiencies, candidly, that frankly, you bear no responsibility for as individuals. However, the utility industry in particular, we're speaking to Southern California Edison here, has a lot to explain for. The communication was not just lacking, but it was embarrassing. Do you have any idea how many residential homeowners were affected in Villa Park because of this event?
You know, I, I forgot to look that up, but we'll get that to you.
Okay. I would appreciate that because I think every single one of those homeowners deserves a written apology, a written apology. And not just because it was Thanksgiving, it's because ratepayers, past, present, and future, have paid a lot of money and will continue to pay a lot of money, and taken upon themselves to upgrade their panels, to install solar panels. And now I'm hearing that there's lobbying being done of the Public Utility Commission to charge existing customers with solar panels, a fee in addition to what they've already done to do their part to strengthen the grid and generate power. Separate issue, but it's, it's an issue. And I would like to see a lot more done by utilities. With respect to this specific wind event, one hour warning is just not, just not enough. I appreciate your candor in that matter. Some other issues that I have are, I don't know why this technology didn't come out sooner, and I don't know what we can do to expedite things, but anything that you can do needs to be done. It, it is an absolute priority. Our residents expect it. I think you two probably expect it, and it should be a priority above and beyond to get it done. Those are the extent of my comments, unless my colleagues have others. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just have a question.
Go ahead.
I've noticed that it appears that you're installing a lot of new or replacing a lot of utility poles, and it appears that the utility poles that you're installing are more robust, they're greater diameter, and they look like they're stronger wood even. Is that part of your prevention project?
Yes, it is. And that's a huge, you know, kind of capital improvement we're doing right now throughout our service territory. And I can get you numbers, you know, specific to Villa Park. I didn't bring those tonight, but yes, those are composite poles, they're, they're fire resistant, well, more fire resistant, and that is the purpose, is to protect against wildfire and to get better equipment up.
In the high fire hazard areas, are you looking to underground any of the utilities?
In limited, in limited cases. And the, the best tool we have is this, what we, sorry, is the covered conductor that we've, that we've been installing on circuits. We started that covered conductor program in the highest fire risk areas, where if there was an incident, would start a large and wild scale, scale fire. We've since, this year, our concentration was on what we call frequently impacted circuits, circuits that had been impacted four or more times by, by public safety power shut offs. There were 72 of those. We've completed all that work this year. So then next year, we're looking at, at other areas to either install covered conductor or in this case, since it's such a small area, I think we've got some other solutions we can do, again, to minimize the chance of, of P S P S here.
Thank you.
What is your outreach program to the people that are affected, like, like happened during Thanksgiving? I mean, is there post outreach program that you do directly with those residents to say you're sorry, or, or whatever? Because it seems like to me, there was no outreach. You call the city manager and talk to him, but what's the outreach to the people that couldn't cook Thanksgiving dinner or whatever?
Yeah, I'm not aware of any, you know, post-event communication. Frankly, you're right. I mean, we, we could be doing a lot more. Those people, their Thanksgiving was, you know, disrupted and maybe even ruined. So I understand the feedback. You know, we are very focused on, you know, we do a lot of outreach on making sure, like, our medical baseline customers, we're reaching them, we make sure they're okay. You know, we actually will even have people go to their doors to knock on the door if we can't get a hold of them. So we're very, you know, very proactive with that. You know, this, this event, I think there were over 80,000 customers who had their power shut off throughout our service territory. So it was an extensive one, but you're right. I mean, we, we should be doing more, and that's one reason we're here tonight. We want to make sure you understand, company-wide, our, our top leaders. I mean, this is not something we wanted to do, and it's, we understand it was devastating for, for some of our customers. Yeah.
Just lastly, I want to thank you for being here again. Please don't take my comments as any sort of personal indictment upon your, your character or your professionalism. Both of you represented your company quite well. And I want to thank Steve for hopping on this so quickly. I was obviously very distraught when I heard, and frankly, saw residents without their lights on on Thanksgiving, and knew that we were going to have some problems. And on behalf of, of our city, I wish we could do more, but we, we can't. So the only thing we can do is, is contact you, and, and all your efforts are appreciated. We just wish that they were done more in the past and hope to see more in the future. So thank you.
So I think this is a great start, as you've heard, you know, I know you and I spoke, so I was one of those that lost power. It was interesting. But I think this is a great start, and I know it's probably hard, you know, to satisfy everyone by coming out, but I, I agree that if I had not had the communication with our city manager and with you, I still would probably be wondering like, why? You know, I can read the email that says, you know, the P S P S, P S P S. But, but when you go into depth like this, of course, everyone after the, you know, understands we're talking about, you know, preventing fires. It's very reasonable, understandable, and necessary. But I agree, maybe when you ask for input, maybe this is the input, that, that some sort of post-event outreach is something that even, you know, for everyone that you sent that notification to that said you're going to have your power shut off, do some sort of follow-up. That's actually a really good idea. I think people would appreciate it. But I do appreciate you guys coming, and I appreciate that, you know, you came and addressed the situation, knowing that, you know, the coals are under your feet. So thank you both very much for coming. Thank you. Okay. At this time, members of the public may address the council on any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. Comments are limited to five minutes per person and 30 minutes for all comments, which I'm not a stickler for the 30 minutes for all comments. I think it's important to hear from everybody that wants to speak. If you do wish to speak, this is on off-agenda items. There are blue speaker cards in the back, and you can fill one of those out and just hand it to one of our city staff. So Steve, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. We have several. Donna Buxton?
Hey, Donna.
Good evening, Mayor Miles and city council members and city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to, again, give you a brief resident update about our traffic situation along Serrano Avenue. The most significant update that I have for you tonight is that we had a very productive meeting with O U S D last week. Their efforts are primarily focused on the road blockage of Serrano, in between Serrano and the entry to Serrano Elementary School. That's a major choke point, and they continue, O U S D continues to come to the table, offering ways that they can partner with us to address the problem. This is a big improvement over prior attempts to work with them, so we're very pleased with that. The solutions that we're talking about are going to take some time, but we are making progress. And again, we're, we're just very pleased with their commitment to the project. The other choke points are the Nichols-Serrano intersection and the numerous crosswalks between Dodson Way and the Nichols-Serrano stop sign. As I mentioned last month, traffic is interrupted approximately 70 times in that short distance between Dodson Way and the Nichols-Serrano stop sign during school dismissal every day. So presently, we're evaluating how many crosswalks are necessary and where they should be located. We should be making that decision soon and working a plan to implement that change. We believe that the three projects that we're working on will collectively address the lion's share of the issues that we're experiencing around the schools. Realistically, we know we can't eliminate the traffic because our roads just aren't meant to accommodate that many cars efficiently, but we are confident that we will make a positive impact on the traffic situation with the changes that we're working on. That is all I have this evening, unless you have any questions.
Counsel?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mary Suzel.
Good evening, Mary.
Good evening. First, I want to thank the Villa Park Community Services Foundation for presenting an exceptionally fine boat parade last evening and giving us the privilege of serving as grand marshals after the cancellation of the 2020 boat parade. Also, the Orange County Sheriff's Department and Fire Authority for all their assistance and it's wonderful to participate with all of you. I just came to record my strong support for the rezoning and development of the Smith Basin. My specific support, as expressed at a previous council meeting, is for a senior independent and assisted living facility. I suggest that residents view the information online about Carmen Oaks in Lake Oswego, Oregon, now affiliated with the Springs. It was independently operated for many years, and my mother was a resident for four years. Like Villa Park, Lake Oswego is an upscale, highly desirable suburb of Portland, and the facility is located in a neighborhood of multimillion dollar homes, most of which were there prior to the building of Carmen Oaks. The complex is a relatively small, very attractive, low-profile group of two-story apartments, which generates virtually no traffic, far less than our schools and town center, has a parking area to accommodate all vehicles of residents or visitors, and generates no noise, lighting, or negative influence on the single-family neighborhood surrounding it. I spent many days visiting my mother there and soon realized that the population of Carmen Oaks is almost 100% long-term residents of Lake Oswego, who had reached the age at which they no longer wished to or were able to maintain their large homes and large lots. Like Villa Park residents, they love their hometown of many years and prefer to remain where their friends and activities are located. There is always a waiting list of older local homeowners seeking to relocate at Carmen Oaks, not across the city of Portland, to an unknown community. Like Villa Park, Lake Oswego is a permanent destination location, not a transient, high-turnover residential area. The residents are long-term homeowners, invested in the community they love and call home, just like Villa Park residents. I cannot think of a finer investment in or more desirable addition to Villa Park than a small, low-profile, high-quality senior residential complex, which permits our own older residents to remain a part of the community when they need to downsize and prioritize personal security. For those Villa Park residents who may see such a product, project as a negative addition to our lovely city, I'd like to suggest that they open their minds to learn more about senior developments in other upscale communities and investigate the enthusiastic acceptance and continued support of the residents who have seen the reward of keeping their aging neighbors in town. And I can say, while visiting my mother, I often took walks in the neighborhood, met many, many of the residents who live in that lovely neighborhood, walking their dogs. Never once did I hear anything except pride and satisfaction. So I, I urge the council and the city to consider offering this to our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
No, we have no other comments.
Okay. I have one. Before we begin with the item number one of the municipal election matters, I would like to make a little statement, so if you all will indulge me. This past year has gone This past year has gone quickly, and I am blessed and honored to have been your mayor for these past 12 months, a responsibility I did not take lightly and one that I feel that in my heart went well. That is not to say that everyone agreed with me all the time, but I can honestly say I did what I felt was in the best interest of the city. And I feel that the thoughtful, healthy dialogue that was exchanged amongst all five of us was productive. City business and council meetings were conducted thoroughly and efficiently. Some input advice or suggestions for the next occupant of the mayor's chair. The mayor's chair may look like all other chairs on the dais, except whomever occupies this chair has a greater responsibility to be a good listener, to be fair, to be self-reliant, and unaffected by the unnecessary noise, and to look past his or her own personal preferences. One hopes every council member practices these traits, but this particular chair holds the higher responsibility to always put what is in the best interest of the majority of the city as a priority. He or she must provide good leadership, structure, welcome input from residents, other council members, and city staff, whether they agree or disagree with the outcome. The mayor should always try to do what is best for the majority of the residents, even if they disagree with that majority. The mayor is selected by fellow council members and not by the residents in a regular election. So one could argue that a councilperson should feel confident and good about where they distribute their one-fifth of a vote to an individual as the next mayor, since the residents do not get to directly vote him or her in. I have been honored to have my turn and was able to impact Villa Park positively. This, in my opinion, was a successful year for our residents, for our council, for our city staff, and for the entire community of Villa Park. From monthly coffee with the mayors to several resolutions regarding retaining local control or making sure that VP is a law enforcement-friendly city, participating in a nurse practitioner month, participating in a program to distribute iPads for seniors who are isolated and having a difficult time with the digital divide that COVID handed us, recognition of our Villa Park veterans by implementing a commemorative pin for those veterans, bringing back the distinguished citizen, implementing council policy to include an invocation or devotion at the beginning of our council meetings, facilitating the first menorah lighting in VP, and most importantly, honoring the residents and fellow council members by being the Villa Park representative while at various functions, district, government, or city committee meetings. I am most proud of my fellow council members for working together and submitting a reasonable housing element to the HCD that I feel will impact the greatest number of residents the least. Before I turn the meeting over to Steve, I would like to say thank you. I'd like to say thank you to my husband and my children. I tend to put 100% into everything I do, and this has taken a lot of dedication that would have been much more difficult without the support of my family. A big thank you to my colleagues, all four of them, for an easy, smooth, and productive year. We work well together, and I look forward to next year with all of us again working with the common goal of preserving our small, beautiful community. City business will get done if we all get along. Steve, please read agenda item number one.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the election of the mayor and the mayor pro tem for the city council in the year 2022. To start, I'm going to declare the offices of mayor and mayor pro tem are vacant. And before we take any action, we'll open the meeting for public comment on the item. We have received a number of blue slips, and we have some written correspondence, which needs to be recorded into the record. So with that, I'll start calling the people. I made a mistake here. I was, I should have deferred to the council if they had any comments themselves beforehand. So I will defer to the council. Ed, if you forgive me, I misspoke there.
Well, I had asked to submit a blue card like a week ago, so I just wanted to...
It's sitting on my desk. My apologies. So I will... Chad?
Thanks. So I just wanted to read something that I wrote, just to make sure I got it clear. I am here to state definitively and with no confusion that I am not opposed to the draft housing element that we submitted to HCD. I regret and apologize for my vote in the September meeting not to send our draft housing element to HCD. In my capacity as a city councilman, I am 100% in favor of the city complying with state law to submit that plan and will vote to support all steps required to act on that plan. What we, as a council and as a city, have submitted is a fully compliant and workable proposal that satisfies our RHNA requirements. I say all of this because it's important to me to express clearly that I will do what it takes to make and keep Villa Park as a town that I love and appreciate. It is why, when I heard about an initiative to put a constitutional amendment on the ballot in support of local control, I jumped in with both feet, taking on responsibility as the Villa Park captain for signature collection efforts. It is important that local elected officials are allowed to maintain control of the plans for our city. And this amendment is a smart way forward. I hope my fellow councilmen, city councilmen, will support the resolution, which is on our agenda tonight regarding this matter. This is not the first thing that I have done to get involved in making our city a better place. Those efforts began years ago when I accepted the mantle of cub master for Villa Park's PAC 815. From there, I have had leading roles with Indian Princesses, where I was a chief, in Rotary, where I served as youth chair, vocational chair, assistant governor, and president. I have served as principal for a day at three of our four Villa Park schools. I have been, I have given the welcome speech at our Villa Park Marine Thanksgiving twice and acted as a limo captain and host for many years. On council, I have been an active library advisory board member, serving on the executive committee, and also represented our council with the Friends of the Library. I have been the city schools representative for my three years in council and assistant director for the OC sanitation district twice and director this past year. I like to get involved. One of my favorite parts in all that I do is listening to our Villa Park residents. Every month, I get together with different groups of residents in our Villa Park Women's League Gourmet, the group of guys that meet for a friendly poker game. I meet weekly with Rotarians, who are among some very influential... I see a lot of you out in the crowd tonight, and get a lot of feedback from all of these areas, just in talking to you. I'm open to hearing all sides of issues that our city faces and always make myself available to talk with. I hope that this has led to informed decisions in my city council votes, where I do my best to represent all the voices of Villa Park. I believe this makes me a good choice for mayor, and if selected, I vow to continue listening and continue doing my best to keep Villa Park the great place that we love.[1082.61][1082.61](APPLAUSE)
Ed Carter? My apologies, Ed. You're up this time.
Chad, you stole my, you stole my speech. No, but seriously, I'm here to support Chad Zimmerman for mayor. I have a lot of respect for Chad for a number of reasons. Basically, some of the volunteer positions that he's taken on in the past. Also because Chad is the guy that always puts his hands up to volunteer when so many others do not. And lastly, I'd like to say, a number of years ago, Chad came to me and said, "Ed, you're the reason that I joined Rotary." Do you remember that, Chad? Well, I'd like to say tonight that you're the reason that I stay in Rotary and do the things that I do because of all the wonderful things you do for our community. So, thank you for your, your service.[1153.76][1153.76](APPLAUSE)
Good evening again. You've had a challenging year working through the process of addressing the state's high-density housing mandate. Arena allocation soared compared to the last cycle. You had few good choices upon which to make your decision. I did not envy the responsibility you had to make that decision since there were no real good choices. I do believe, however, that you came to the correct conclusion for our housing element to be largely centered on the Smith Basin. The housing element for Villa Park has been submitted to the state, but it's important to note that it is still with us and will continue to be with us. A November 28th article in the Orange County Register titled, "Housing Desires Come Up Short", discussed that in spite of the mandate, cities are not performing at required levels. The article indicated that only 20 out of 538 jurisdictions were on track with their housing mandates. It makes me wonder, at what point will the state start to take more action to push these mandates in order to see more results? When you vote for mayor this evening, I urge you to make your selection with the housing element in mind. I believe it is critical we have a mayor who supports the housing element and will be a strong advocate for it. We need someone who has shown commitment to our plan and city policy, as well as leadership qualities and strength in making difficult decisions. In closing, I do want to thank you all for your service to the city. Mayor Miles, I truly appreciate your comments about your year as mayor. I think you've done a spectacular job and appreciate all of you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I am here this evening to endorse Chad Zimmerman for mayor of Villa Park. While I first got to know Chad through our children, I soon came to know him as an extremely involved community member and volunteer well before he was on our city council. As he said, stole my words too, he has been principal of the day three times for our local schools, and I have served with him on the city's city schools committee as well. So I have seen his commitment to our schools and our students firsthand in both his role as a parent and a city councilman, and he has been an invaluable advocate in both of those positions. Recently, I have become involved in the statewide effort to overturn the controversial laws SB 9 and SB 10 recently passed by the state of California. It was actually of no surprise to me when I got involved and found out that Chad was the Villa Park captain of this proposed initiative in his capacity as a Villa Park community member. This initiative in November 2022 will be key in limiting the state overreach in our local zoning policies and preserving our quality of life here in Villa Park. I can think of no one better to lead us forward than to have Chad Zimmerman as our next mayor.
Good evening, mayor, and members of the city council. I'm Bill Underwood, a 41-year resident of Villa Park and currently city treasurer. But I don't speak tonight as city treasurer. I speak on, as a private citizen, on behalf of Chad Zimmerman. I was Rotary membership chair when we accepted Chad into Villa Park Rotary when he attended a meeting as a Boy Scout representative. Chad's a tireless worker, a listener, a facilitator, a man of action who gets results while having fun, a dedicated family man, a multi-processing volunteer in Villa Park beyond the usual strong volunteers that we have, the number of things that he gets handles all at one time. Women would say they're expert at that, but Chad would give them a strong run. He's got a good Dartmouth education and a Southern California background. He deserves, and Villa Park deserves, a peaceful transition from mayor pro tem to mayor and a city council that works together for our small city and our sensational, experienced city manager. I remain apolitical in city politics and have always supported the best person to get results. And tonight is Chad Zimmerman, and thank you for letting the citizens speak.[1478.46][1478.46](APPLAUSE)
Jim Reichert?
Harder and harder to get up, I tell you. Mayor, council. That's a very nice statement, by the way. Excellent to start with. I want to speak to you a little bit about tradition. I think you've heard me before talking about togetherness. And I think tradition helps with togetherness. We have some great traditions in this community. You know, Santa Claus and the fire truck, or Dry Boat Parade. Those are traditions, and I think they are very important. And traditions help bring a community together. We have a tradition in this city that the mayor pro tem should become the mayor. And I think that is, I don't only think, I believe that is very important for a community of our size. I believe that every member, and I used to be a member of the city council, every member should have the opportunity to become mayor. I think it's important for the city and it's important for the togetherness of the city. And the mayor also represents our city, and we need a person that's active. And Mayor Pro Tem Zimmerman has been extremely active with Rotary and Boy Scouts and other things and other committee members and activities within the community. So it's important to have a person that represents the city well and is part of the city, takes part in many communities, many different activities in the community. Therefore, I hope you consider tradition and do your job and get ourselves a good mayor, Chad Zimmerman.[1601.41][1601.41](APPLAUSE)
Okay. Those are all the written requests. We do have three individuals who called me personally this afternoon, asked, sent me emails, and I'll read very briefly, quickly, their emails they asked read tonight. "Steve, please pass this on to council. I regret not being there in person by my minute airport, headed to San Jose for work." I'm sure he meant San Jose. "Apologies for this haphazard email. Robert and Madonna Frackleton strongly support elevating Chad Zimmerman from mayor pro tem to mayor, as is the custom. We've known Chad to be an outstanding person for over 10 years now. Whether he's volunteering for YMCA Indian Princesses, Boy Scouts, Rotary, or the Villa Park Marines Thanksgiving, you can always count on Chad. He is the lifeblood of our community and dedicated of our citizens. It is turned to be mayor, give him his due. Heck, the guy even saved our home from a bee swarm once. He's the best. Three cheers for Mayor Zimmerman, Robert Frackleton."[1663.26][1663.26](APPLAUSE) The next is from Bill Campbell, who says, "I cannot attend tonight's Villa Park city council meeting due to a prior commitment. I ask that you read this letter in support of Councilman Zimmerman at the council meeting. I support the election of Chad Zimmerman to the position of mayor of Villa Park. I've known Chad for over eight years. He's been a dedicated volunteer in our Boy Scout troop, at our grammar middle and high schools, and our local Rotary Club. His efforts have helped make Villa Park a better place to live. Chad has served as the president of Villa Park Rotary Club. During his term of office, attendance improved at our meetings due to his respect. He showed our members and the innovative technology he adopted for our meetings. Chad's a good listener, but he can be a man of action when necessary. I endorse Chad for his first run in Villa Park City Council. He is attentive of the meetings and respectful of his colleagues in the public. He is available to come to the home of Villa Park citizen who needs help from the city or advice on dealing with the city. He genuinely loves our city. He is currently the council's mayor pro tem. I believe he's fully prepared to be the next mayor. I request Villa Park City Council elect Chad Zimmerman mayor at tonight's meeting."[1728.83][1728.83](APPLAUSE) Lastly, I received a much briefer email from Greg Mills, who indicates, "Honorable council, tonight, a new Villa Park mayor will be selected amongst you. Typically, well-established protocol has the current mayor pro tem succeeding the current mayor. As a vast majority of Villa Park citizens, support this tradition as I do and further urge you to support this exceedingly reasonable progression of Chad Zimmerman to the mayor this evening. Respectfully submitted, Greg Mills."[1762.11][1762.11](APPLAUSE) Okay, with that being said, we'll move forward with the election, unless there's anybody else here in the audience that has, feels they would like to speak. Okay. What I will do is, we're going to open up the office for nominations, and we're going to specifically deal with the mayor. We'll deal with the mayor pro tem. After the mayor's selected, the mayor will run that. Go ahead. Members will not need to be recognized to make a nomination. They need to be recognized to make a nomination and may nominate any of the sitting council members, including themselves. No second will be required, but sometimes one or more member... No second will be required, but sometimes one or more members may second nomination to indicate endorsement. When it appears that no one else wishes to make a nomination, the city clerk will ask if there are any further nominations. If there are no responses, the city will declare nomination closed and ask for any comments prior to voting. After nominations have closed, voting will take place. All votes shall be taken by roll call. If more than one nominee is taken, we'll vote in the order in which they were nominated. As soon as one of nominees receives a majority vote, they'll be declared elected mayor, and no votes are taken on the remaining nominees. Once the mayor has been elected, he or she will be, takes the floor and conduct the election of mayor pro tem in the same manner as the election of mayor, and my job will be done for the night. With that, I am now going to open up the nominations for mayor.
Rosini for mayor.
Robbie had, Robbie had his hands up and interrupted.
Didn't have to be interrupted. Didn't have to be recognized.
I'm going to go use my discretion. Robbie?
Steve, thank you very much, and council members. I am honored tonight to place into nomination Chad Zimmerman in honor of our tradition, number one, as people indicated. And number two, Chad and I have served together in this community for many, many years together, and I think he'll make an excellent leader for us.
Point of order. Item number three on the election of mayor pro tem states that members need not be recognized to make a nomination and may nominate any of the sitting council members, including themselves.
I'm going to exercise the discretion.
Use the rules.
I'm going to exercise discretion. He did raise his hand first, and I was speaking as he did, so I called on him first. So I'm going to use that and go by that. So I apologize if there's any disagreement, but that's the way we're going to run it for mayor. Is there any other nominees?
Rosini.
No, these are nominations taken specifically from the council. The public was given the opportunity to speak, so we'll work through that. Okay. With that, as we indicated, we'll take the nominees in order. Chad Zimmerman will vote verbally, and we're going to go from, there's no order of here, so we're going to go from the senior to least senior member on the council. That being, for Chad Zimmerman, the most senior member would be Bob Colacott.
Can we have discussion?
If you'd like to ask, make a comment, you're free to.
I would like to make a comment. So I just want to say, I had, I had concerns and expressed them to Chad and appreciated his listening. My concerns were wanting to make sure that the mayor pro tem, whoever, the mayor pro tem, specifically Chad, recognized that the mayor needed to, in my opinion, be willing to accept the housing element that we had ruled on as a majority. And I had expressed to Chad earlier that it was a concern of mine because in the September meeting, he had not expressed his support for what the majority of the council. So I do appreciate your comments this evening, that you recognize the importance of the policy that the council put together for the housing element, and just want to say thank you. That was it.
So with that, we'll go back to the vote. Is there any other comments?
I have a comment. The, during, the, there are two concerns I have regarding Mr. Zimmerman. One I expressed at the last meeting, which is the, even though he was, we had established a city policy on March 11th to, for our housing element, and we had all been well aware throughout the summer how important it was to have a unanimous vote to support the housing element and how critical this is. This is the most critical thing facing our city and that I've seen our city face, that we had to have a unanimous support to forward that document onto the, to the city or to the state for approval. In spite of that, two of our councilmen voted against it, sending the wrong message to the state. It's not a slam dunk to the state. We really needed that. The other was that we had an issue in May where another councilman made a statement to the, to the community at the council meeting and then walked out and then had his comments published. The items, part of the items were regarding the lawsuit that was filed by Deanna Fastinelli, which was thrown out in 11-page dismissal by a superior court judge. Yet Chad insisted on supporting the comments, saying that that should be brought up again, further dividing the city. So I don't think that expresses leadership. And, you know, with that, I'll vote no for his nomination for mayor.
And the next would be, I believe, Councilman Rosini? Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Council, former mayor Miles?
With all due respect, yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Zimmerman?
Yes.
So with that, I would ask that the mayor and the mayor pro tem exchange seats. So the mayor will conduct, the newly elected mayor will conduct the.
Give me a second. Oh, you did give me a second. Taking my sweet time. Coffee break, anyone?
So as he's changing seats, the mayor will conduct, the newly elected mayor will conduct the election for the mayor pro tem using the same process as prior. So with that, Chad will be conducting, the new mayor Zimmerman will be conducting.
He needs my notes. You can't have that though, that's got my name on it.
Gotcha. I have one of those from Bob Bell. I'll bring that in.
You want my notes?
Please.
Well done.
I mean, if you want to, I can do them digitally too, but whatever. I know there's always a really well-prepared packet for the mayor to be able to speak through and talk through. I appreciate that.
Let me make sure there's no magnets in there for my husband. That would be embarrassing. There you go.
Excellent. So in regards to mayor pro tem selection?
You would open up for nominees.
I would like to open this up for nominations. And having done so, I'd actually just like to speak on that and say, I know there was some discussion a few years ago. We had some debate about Vince and Robbie proceeding as mayor originally. And then a couple of years ago, Robbie had the distinction of being our mayor during COVID and didn't get to participate as much in all of the activities that were laid forward. And with that in mind, I would like to nominate Robbie to be our mayor pro tem.
I'd like to nominate Vince Rosini for mayor pro tem. Vince has shown much significant leadership for our council. I think he's been, has led more initiatives for our city. He's represented us extremely well on the Orange County Fire Authority, raising to the level of vice chairman of the Orange County Fire Authority, which is in Orange County's hierarchy, that's a top position. He's done a great job, and he's, you know, he could have brought a whole room full of people too, had he decided to. In fact, he could have brought people from all over the county to support him. But that's my nomination.
Are there any other nominations? Okay. Is there anybody that wanted to speak on this matter? I think I can open this up to the public if there were any other comments. Seeing none. Council members, are there any comments? Discussion? Okay. I'll now close the public hearing, and if there's a, if we could, Steve, would you call for the vote?
We'll call in the same order as we just did, is Councilman Colacott?
Who are we voting on?
We're voting, I'm sorry, for Robbie Pitts as mayor pro tem.
No.
Then it would be, the next would be Councilman Rosini?
No.
Councilman Pitts. Now Councilman, Miles, your name tags, I'm looking at the name tags, I gotta switch them.
No.
And Mayor Zimmerman.
Yes.
So it fails on a two, three vote. So now we go to the second, would be Councilman Rosini, and we'll vote again in the same order. Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts. Councilman, Councilwoman Miles, I gotta get used to this again now.
Yes.
And then Mayor Zimmerman.
So just to preference, I have no objections to Vince Rosini being mayor pro tem. He's done a fantastic job. There's no slight intended. As I said, I was trying to build a bridge there, but my vote is yes on that.
Okay, so that passes on a four to one vote. So the mayor, mayor will be, for in 2022 would be.
Switching again.
Chad Zimmerman, and the mayor pro tem would be Vince Rosini.
And another coffee break. Oh, yeah, we got it. Oh, I was supposed to, oh.
Take your clicker if you would, take your voting.
Maybe we should take a two-minute break, and we got to take our little voters with us.
Take, you switch the voter. Have the numerical on the side, and they're attached to that.
So you're one. You're always one, huh?
I'm always one. Not you. Okay, all right, sorry. Sorry, I got a lot of stuff.
I'm semi.
Sorry. I've got stuff. And a jacket. Hi. And my purse is, oh, there it is.
Get that water out of your way.
I didn't wear my undies and my socks.
Need all the heightening I can get here.
Oh, oh, my word. Oh, that's okay. Oh, he's alive.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. No, he's not. Oh, I think my folder's, oh my God, my left notes.
Is that crystals?
Uh, yeah, this is her.
Is this your walk? Uh, I think that's mine.
No, that's, that's yours.
Thanks.
I haven't had to move.
Well, if that's past mayor, that would be, that'd be why. Like, I haven't sat there either.
Okay, we're ready.
Ready. So we move along to public hearings. Move along into our agendized public hearings. Our first hearing is to review and weigh of reading in full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. I will now open the hearing. Staff, please give the staff report.
Thank you, mayor. This is the monthly item we have on there to run expeditious meetings. We'd recommend approval.
Council members, do you have any questions of staff? Is there anyone here to speak on this hearing?
No.
Steve, is anybody that wrote in?
No.
Okay, thank you. Council members, is there any discussion regarding this item?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Please.
Now you can vote automated.
Excellent.
Just click it, and we're good. You don't have to hit submit. There you go. Passes five zero.
It worked.
Yay.
Technology.
And moving on to item three, variance number 2021-06 at 1919391 Mesa Drive. I'll now open the hearing. Staff, could you please give the report?
Thank you. This is the variance, as you mentioned, for 19391 Mesa Drive. This was originally heard at our meeting in November. It was continued by the council to, in order to afford the opportunity for the appellant and, absolutely applicant, to, to work with the neighbors to see if there was any potential for resolution. The applicant has indicated that he would like to continue forward with the variance. And Ray Pasquale can give an update. We provided supplemental material. But Ray, why don't you just walk through real quickly?
Real quickly, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I did prepare that memo that simply updated information about the project. I included some graphics that hopefully will help you understand the plans a little bit more. And so that's pretty much it. And if you have any questions about that, I'll be happy to answer it, answer any questions. And the property owner, Kevin Carver, is here this evening as well to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions of staff? Crystal?
Last meeting, Councilmember Colacott had asked about verifying if there was a blue line stream. Do we have that?
Yes, you'll see in the memo that was addressed that there is no blue line stream identified in any portion of the subject property.
Perfect. That was it.
Okay, and Colacott?
Yes, the applicant is proposing a 20-foot-high wall. Will there be a fence on top, and if so, how high would be the fence? So we're not talking about just 20 feet. We're talking something higher than 20 feet by the time it's all done.
Good question, councilman. Yes. It's not shown on the preliminary grading plans. But if the variance is approved, I would suspect that he would put a six-foot-high wall, which is the maximum allowable height along the property line, on top of the retaining wall or near the retaining wall.
Is there any other way to develop this property besides building a retaining wall?
Sure. I mean, you could, you could build, you could flatten a portion of the site to build a single-family home, but that's not the desires of the property owner. But simple answer is yes.
There are a number of other properties up in the hills that have similar topography, where the street, the property itself, with the lot, the grading is down through the property or from the property. In fact, some of the houses I know or that I've seen, you actually kind of look down on the roofs of these properties, and they've. So it's common in Villa Park to develop a, such a property where the, you know, the, the street is higher than the property without having to build a 20-foot-high retaining wall, isn't there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, there are examples of that existing in the city now, yes.
Okay. I think if you walk along Saravilla and Mesa, you see a number of examples of that. What is so different about this property that they need a 20-foot-high retaining wall?
Well, what's unique about this property is that it's, it's in a hole, basically. I mean, there's a gap, there's a gully along the west property line, and the property owner's proposed design is to lift that side of the property up. So that's even with Mesa Drive. With this proposal, it would also address some drainage issues, which I'm sure Mr. Carver can talk to you about a little bit more. But that's the design that city staff was presented. And, you know, it resulted in building retaining walls that were more than 10 feet, which is the maximum allowable by the zoning ordinance.
But there are other ways to develop a property, a lot that's, and we've seen other examples that are existing in Villa Park where they've developed similar properties without building 20-foot-high retaining walls.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Is that all?
Well, I do have one more. It appeared, you know, I haven't, I don't know what the costs are, but it seems like constructing a 20-foot-high retaining wall is a fairly expensive prop. but it seems like constructing a 20-foot-high retaining wall is a fairly expensive proposition and then filling behind it. Has the applicant considered just filling in the valley and working with the adjacent homeowner so that they would not have to look at a...
Please go ahead and step to the podium if you'd like to speak.
It's like...
It's a green light will show.
Sorry, my glasses on. I actually approached the...
Could you state your name and just...
Name for the record.
Oh, my name's Kevin Carver. I'm the property owner of 19391 Mesa Drive in Villa Park. I actually contacted the neighbor, Mr. Smith, probably two years ago, because we were gonna just do a retaining wall 10 feet tall. And he said, no, I don't want you to do that. I want you to take the dirt and go straight across, kind of like we talked about. It's... And so I went back and I had to change my grading plans. And then when I went back to him six months ago and said, hey, do you agree to this? And he goes, no, I don't want you to touch my property. And then we went to the homeowners, I mean, we came to this city council meeting. He was here and he said he's gonna build his dream house. And then a day later, he put the property for sale. So I can't deal with him anymore because he changes his mind twice. And now the property's for sale. So it's not a 20-foot wall. It's a 19-foot wall. For curb appeal, it makes it a nicer and approachable, nicer house, having your house above grade rather than below grade, because the last property we had there, we had drainage issues because it was below grade. And I don't want to do it. I don't want to deal with that anymore. And I want my property higher so that I can be street level. To answer your question, I wouldn't put a block wall in. I would put a ride-on fence, because at that height, it gives me more views of the valley.
Okay. Are there any other comments that you wanted to make? Where you want to make sure you're done?
No.
Any other comments that you wanted to make?
No.
Are there any other questions from the public on this? Do we have anybody that's...
We have no comments. Well, we don't have any blue cards, but...
Can I have some questions first?
Sure.
So I asked you last time if you were planning on living in the house. And you eventually said yes. But I just want confirmation. When the, once the house is built, you will be the homeowner?
Yes.
And were you able to speak to the, I believe it's the Gilcrests? Is that who's?
Yeah, I did talk to her for about 20 minutes.
And have we had any communication from them, Ray? From the Gilcrests?
Yeah. Yeah, they, there was a letter of opposition that I forwarded to Steve as well as Mr. Carver. It was received yesterday evening.
Oh. I don't think I got that.
I didn't get that either.
It was yesterday evening, probably. I don't have.
Okay.
Do you have it?
I can make a quick copy of it.
Please.
Well, can you, or can you read it? Do you have it? Can you read it?
Sure.
And was that the only opposition letter you received since the last...
Since the last meeting, yes.
What about the people on estates?
Yeah, they submitted a letter of opposition...
This time, not...
Before the November 16th.
So, yeah, so those letters still count. The letters of opposition in the November meeting still count. I'm just saying, are there any new ones besides the Gilcrests?
This would be the newest one.
Okay. Would you mind reading?
Bear with me. We are writing this letter in opposition. This was a letter dated December 14th from Alexander and Joanna Gilchrist.
So that was today, 14th?
This was December 14th.
That's today.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's why we didn't get it. That's okay.
We are writing this letter in opposition to the proposed retaining wall variance at 19391 Mesa Drive. We have several concerns, which are as follows. According to the city planning manager, the planned retaining wall will tower 13 feet over our existing six-foot-tall wall. See photo below. Although we realize there are plans to beautify the planned wall, it will be a towering concrete fortress over our property. The planned retaining wall will look inconsistent with any of the adjacent properties in the neighborhood. That was bullet item number one. The second one, due to the increased height of the wall and property, due to the planned 6,030 cubic yards of filled dirt, our property will become over 20 feet below the new lot level, not to mention the addition of a house on top of that. We are concerned about sightlines directly into our home and yard. Item number three, with the planned grading and addition of such a large amount of filled dirt, we are extremely concerned about drainage. We are new to Villa Park and this property and have not lived through a rainy season. We have heard from neighbors that there are existing drainage and flooding issues, which would only be exacerbated by planned grading and additional dirt. Potential earthquakes are also a concern. Finally, we would like to reiterate, we are not opposed to the development of the lot at 19391 Mesa Drive, but we are opposed to the proposed retaining wall variance due to the above reasons. Thank you for your time and consideration into this matter. Sincerely, Alexander and Joanna Gilchrist.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. We do have other people here to speak on this. I'm sorry. We had council member questions first. Wanted to just make sure all of those were answered. Did anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
I think Robbie has a question.
One question. How many are for and how many against? A total now between the two meetings.
One, two, three...
There's four pro.
Four pros still?
Four opposed, I believe, including the one recent.
Sorry, three. There's three, four. Three?
There's, yeah, there's three in support of and two opposed.
Four. I think there's four, because there were two...
I say four opposed, I think there are four opposed.
I think there are four opposed because there were two on estates. And then Smith.
Two on Mesa, two on estates. One of the estates being the most recent.
Are they all adjacent properties?
There's a map in the attachment that was provided, which identifies where the property locations are. I think there's the one adjacent, directly adjacent to it is the opposed. Right? Because it surrounds it the way, am I right?
That's right.
And the others are very close, but not directly adjacent.
This is a odd, because this property sits kind of nestled in the Smith's big, huge property. So it's completely encased by the Smiths. But then all the other opposition ones are abutting against that, so...
I have a question. What, you're at the, you have the estates property?
We're at Seven Estates.
Seven Estates? Okay. I'm just looking from Google Earth in a street-level view. I'm trying to see from what point of view you're gonna be able to see, because I have that concern too. I see Five Estates has a long flag lot. Correct me if I'm wrong. That's to your left?
We're the flag lot.
You're the flag lot? Okay, okay.
The gazebo that's right at the backside looking right into that 20-foot wall.
Okay.
Can you stand up?
Yes, I got it. So if there are no more questions for the applicant, I'd like to open and have other people.
Kelly McBride, Seven Estates Drive. So the two concerns that I had were the fact that, you know, we do have a sightline right into the 20-foot wall. And so we, you know, when you say the property sits in a hole, well, we're even lower. So to have a homeowner build another fortress above us and alter that natural landscape that comes all the way from the Portofino Estates, down to Mesa, across and down again into our properties, and then that we create an abutment at that level seems to me to be an egregious waiver and request for a variance to the 10-foot. If he builds a 10-foot retaining wall, he cuts that in half and reduces most of the problems of the quote sightlines and things that he's talking about. The fact is, is that we were the ones that alerted the neighbor across this streamline where the drainage is that we have a concern about. And we let them know that they're, hey, did you know that this variance was coming up for the council? So I take exception, you know, respectfully to Mr. Carver about contacting the neighbors, because we are the ones that are affected by this, but we did not get contacted. We did not even know about tonight's continuance of the variance, which I am surprised about, because once it's something gets, you know, we're within the 500-foot radius of a proposed variance, we're supposed to be notified by these things. We didn't even know that that was on the agenda tonight. And so it just, we would prefer to see that he conforms with the city codes, conforms with the natural flow of the landscape in that area. And then we're all, you know, happy campers and good neighbors. Thank you. So the drainage issue, there's a, on our property, the wall comes back. Two years ago, we had the serious floods. And that's when I was also new to the neighborhood. I moved in in November of 17. And so we had the big rains the next year after that. What happened was this property has a large culvert on it, like you indicated. So that has a piece that goes under the, one of the opponent's properties that comes back. But that overfilled, so all of that water goes down between these two walls behind us. We're just concerned that with the property up, now it all roots down, the Smith's rear access road comes down into that culvert and then gets channeled all the way back. So there's, in our world, I think that the hydrology report is critical to, in fact, not exacerbate, which is already a current condition. During those floods, it not only filled that, turned into a four-foot raging stream behind there, but came around the backside where my gazebo looks into his property and came down the steps to the gazebo and nearly flooded into our property. So that's why we have a serious concern about it, as evidenced by my way.
I appreciate that. That was very well described. Thank you.
There's a similar crib wall on the west end of Saravilla, just above Valley. Are you familiar with that?
I am.
Have you looked at that?
Yeah, they, and I actually, when we came in, we were alerted to that. We spoke to Mr. Carver here at the planning department when we, when we had concerns about it. And I encouraged him. I said, in any event, I think the crib wall is the way to solve the problem. It's planted with bougainvillea, et cetera. So, you know, again, until you see the final design, you know, I don't know if it's gonna be aesthetic or not aesthetic. It's just, that's, once he gets the variance, he can do whatever he wants. So that's our concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
A couple items I wanted to bring up. As the hydrology report, half my property, because it'd be going up all the way, will drain westward. So we're gonna take a lot of the water that now flows down through the culvert. It's always been draining that way. It's gonna take it away. So that's why, one of the reasons the engineer wanted our property as high as he can, because it would take away the water. Does that, is that what you mean? So to your correction, the Portofino property does not drain down that culvert. They actually have to drain to the City of Orange culvert ditches that are on Mesa. And that's when I bought the property, when they developed Portofino, they made me sign the grant deed, because my, part of my property sat on Mesa, that they had to put the culverts in. So that's why I'm aware of that. So there is not any water from Portofino that goes down through that culvert. The only water that goes through that drainage culvert is the Smith's property and my property. The other thing that I don't know if you guys got a copy of, is this in your packet? This is the, what's it, 19381 Mesa? This is their wall on their property. So this wall is actually 15 feet long, tall. And it goes probably 250 feet. So it's the whole length of their property. So this, the water drains in between the Smith's property and this wall. And this is what graded up to make their property flat.
This is the Gilchrist property? Is that what you're talking about?
Thanks.
Question of staff. Was that wall permitted or... Yes, it was. Sorry. Was that wall permitted and was a variance granted for that?
Older than God.
Councilman, that was before my time. I would have to look at permit records and stuff. But I'm assuming it was as part of the development of that subdivision.
So let me clarify with you. That property at 19381 Mesa, that was my brother's. So that's why I know about that wall and everything about that wall, because he put it in. So he did get permits for that wall.
That's prior to the Gilchrist purchasing the house?
Prior to the Gilchrist, that is correct, yes. So, I mean, if you guys, I mean, I want this type of a wall, because it's a lot more friendlier in looking. It is, because I can plant vegetation on it. I don't mind you approving it, subject to this type of wall. I'm okay. This wall is way better than another curb wall that you can't plant stuff with. I'd rather have something that's more, it's already in the city of Villa Park and it's more user-friendly. It looks nicer for curb appeal. I'm okay with that. But again, my biggest thing is to raise the property up so it drains properly away from their property. At the same time, it's curb appeal for me. It's more value to my house. I don't want to be below grade. I want to be street level. This illustrates why we have to be very careful in issuing variances, because as soon as somebody gets a variance from our zoning code, just like this gentleman, he points to, you know, what had came before and they can do it, why can't I do it? Well, he did 15 feet, can't, why can't I do 20?
Sounds like a recent subdivision.
Do we know about sunlight? And this is in particular for Kelly. And you're, how this grading would affect the sunlight and the visual? I understand there's gonna be something there, whether it's 10 feet or 20 feet. What does that do to light and what comes through there? Okay, thanks.
Good point.
Any other questions? You can come up and...
That wall on the Gilchrist property, there's no, I mean, that's right behind our house. There's no...
Ma'am, you have to, you have to come up to the, I'm over here talking.
If you could, you could speak into the microphone, so...
Because it's a public hearing, so we have to.
There's... My name's Catherine McBride at Seven Estates. I don't know of any wall, because the Gilchrist property is right...
That's the Gilchrist property and that's your neighbor's property.
This is our wall, isn't it? That's my wall. This is my wall.
Ah, it's up a little ways. This is down a little, this is closer towards the end of where it drains out.
That's where it drops down into the big stream area, yes.
But where is, where is that? So these walls are, no one sees those walls. Those walls are in a channel like this. These walls aren't in anyone's view.
They're not in a view, correct, but they're opposing a wall? My biggest thing is they're opposing a wall and they have a wall.
Right, but, well, your brother built this wall and it's behind an area. No one sees this wall. It's like in a channel.
You guys see that wall?
Can I make a suggestion? I think this needs to be continued, because it sounds like that there is discussions that need to be had. If we outright say no, then it dies for a year. If we continue it and allow the you to interact and communicate with the Gilcrests and the McBrides and whomever else is, has, you know, issued an opposition letter, you know, maybe you need to sit down with them and explain some of the things about the drainage and, you know, the wall or show pictures or whatever. You know, my suggestion is, is that you continue it and have a meeting where you get together with all of them and see if you guys can't work something out. That's my suggestion.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to do that.
So that would be, have to be a motion by the council, because this is a public hearing.
Second.
Can I make a couple statements as well?
Please.
So this is a variance request, which is allowed under state law, allowed under a municipal code, based upon specific findings that have to be made in order to grant a variance. The five specific findings required are the findings we make and are outlined in the resolution. If the council were to deny the variance, you have to approve a resolution with findings stating that these findings are not met. Okay? So all we had prepared on a staff level at this point in time is a resolution in support with findings stating why you should approve the project. Next time, should we come back with two resolutions? One for support, one for denial? Otherwise, if it gets denied, you deny it, but then you direct us to come back at the next meeting with a resolution incorporating those findings. So we just want direction.
That's an excellent point.
Should we come with both?
I think we should come with both.
Okay. And so the denial findings would be based upon the evidence that we've talked about here, you know, about other properties being in similar situations where they're lower and don't have the wall, the aesthetic impact, drainage visual impacts of these high walls. Those would be the type of findings in opposition. And then the ones in support would be the ones in here already, so...
And my hope is that we don't need the denial. We don't... And my hope is that we don't need the denial, we only need the approval. I like to support, but if there are opposition from your neighbors and there isn't a consensus and there are sufficient reasons, then we should be prepared for that as well.
Absolutely. And just a couple procedural points, because the, Mr. Maguire? Is it Mr. Maguire? McBride, okay. When we send out notices, we always do notice for the first meeting. And then if it's continued, there's no further notices. It's sort of, you read the council agenda and then that's the public record, just so you know you weren't slighted or anything as far as notice on that issue. And secondly, sort of from a decision-making perspective, obviously gathering and getting information from community as to the pros and cons and the evidence related thereto is important. But at the end of the day, it either, the approval either rises or falls on the evidence submitted. It's not a pure nose count as to who's in favor, who's against. It's what the evidence shows. So obviously get community input, but in the end, it's the analysis of the evidence, whether it comes from the majority or the minority in the room as to, for the support or the denial of the resolution.
Well, I think the evidence shows we got a lot of questions. Time for continuance.
And so the motion on the table is to continue until the next meeting of a date of?
January 25th.
Could I add an amendment to the motion that, that all the affected homeowners be notified directly?
I'm sorry?
That all the, all the affected residents be notified of the continuance.
And the affected residents being defined, how so?
The 24, there's 24 in the, there's 24 residents that are within that 300 radius.
That's fine. Just make sure that we don't.
So, we have a motion and a second to continue, and we have an amendment on that?
Any amendment would be, if the maker of the motion accepts it, it is incorporated into the motion itself.
Yes.
And there's no separate vote required.
Correct.
I accept it.
Okay.
And the second has to accept it as well.
Yes.
So I'm going to go ahead and close public hearing, unless you had something else you, sure, go for it.
No, your guys' time is valuable, but I live in San Clemente right now. And it's really, you know, to sit two and a half hours and then be turned down again, it's really, really frustrating. So can I have, can you get with questions that you really have concerns over, so that I can address them ahead of time? Because I know you guys did have some concerns and you got with Rick and he got with me immediately. If we can get those, please, so that I can get with the neighbors and get the questions addressed. Because to be delayed and delayed is really frustrating.
Can we offer the Zoom option to him?
Absolutely. Thank you for your patience and coming back. I appreciate your continuing to come down. We do have a Zoom option, so if there's?
No, I prefer to be here in person. Everything's personal. If it were a computer, I get it. But I, I say, it rain or shine, I already told them today, I'm coming no matter what, you know? So again, I appreciate your guys' time. I do value Villa Park. I've had the property for years. I do want to make it a great place, but I don't want to offend the neighbors at the same time. But the same thing, I want to, I want to keep my valuable property. So thank you again.
Thanks. Ms. McBride, did you have something else you wanted?
What I wanted to add is, the reason that we didn't know about the meeting tonight is because when we looked at the results of the meeting that you held with him like a month ago, it said that it was passed. So there was nothing, it said it was approved in the notes. We went online, we were out of town, we went online.
Just to clarify, we approved a continuance? So that we, we all voted in favor of that continuance, but that was not the vote to approve the actual?
Oh, I didn't see that it was approved for continuance. I just saw that the resolution was approved, period.
Yeah.
And it said there, and then it said there were no oppositions. And I had put, we had put a letter, I had brought you personally a letter, and it said in there, there were no oppositions, which I was wondering why, when I, we had submitted a letter and?
No, we knew, we got your letter from the November meeting. We got your letter.
Okay, because in the notes, it said there were no oppositions to?
No opposition to the continuance.
The minutes do reflect that a motion was made by Councilmember Rossini, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Resimerman, approved by the following roll call vote to continue the public hearing to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting with the amendment. So that was?
So I think they're?
Our residents aren't pros like we are, so.
Maybe I didn't read it.
It's a confusing issue.
It is a little bit confusing. And what also can help is that we do have the, all of this is broadcast and we do put those up on YouTube. So if you're not sure about something, please feel free to go back and just watch it and make sure, helps, helps me. I go back and check those out too.
Can I actually get it on YouTube? Because I checked into it and all we have is DirecTV.
It's on YouTube.
You can get onto our website and it has a link to the YouTube directly. You get right to it.
Yep, absolutely.
And I actually drove to your guy, because I knew you guys had the opposition in the November meeting, I drove, in case you have cameras, and sat outside to try and see what I would see. I stayed in my car, but in case you guys were wondering, that was me.
Okay. So unless there's any other discussion, we have a motion, a second amendment?
You just vote on the system.
Please vote.
Did you get it?
It's not displaying. Are we not ready?
There you go.
The vote again?
The continuance was passed with the 5-0, and that would include the amendment to notify all those within 300 feet.
Perfect.
Of the continuance.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, thank you guys for coming.
Thank you.
And Mr. Carver, I would just like to say, I really hope you get with your neighbors and like, you know, are able to come up with something that everyone's agreeable with. Drive safe.
Now we will consider our consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council staff or the public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Council members, are there any items from four to eight that you would like to remove from the consent calendar? Hearing none.
So moved.
That's second.
That we have a motion and a second to, for approval?
Any members of the public want to comment?
Do you have any public comment?
No.
Okay, thanks. We'll go ahead and vote.
Passed as 5-0.
Excellent, and we can move along to the city manager report. Steve, take it away.
Thank you. The, I attached the month, regular monthly report. For any questions, I'm prepared to answer. The other issue I would like to give you a very brief update to, and city attorney can add to my comments. As you're all aware, the, there has been a work stoppage by the employees at Republic Waste Hauler. That being, that commenced last Thursday. And as a result, no residential trash has been picked up since in Villa Park. This has affected a number of cities in Orange County. I want to say 10 to 12. I don't know the exact number, but approximate, but, but a number of them. That being said, the city managers and we have all talked, we've talked to the Republic. They are in negotiations. They commenced them, they were in negotiations. They have continued with a federal mediator as of this week. And they, the city managers have gotten together and expressed our concerns about the lack of residential pickup. For the record, Republic has brought in basically what they call blue team members, which I'm not sure exactly where they come from, elsewhere employed by Republic, who are driving their trucks and who are picking up commercial. So our commercial trash in this town center has been picked up. I drove in this morning and had to wait for a Republic truck to pick up the Ralph's trash bins. So they are being picked up and the restaurant's trash is being picked up as well. So it is residential recycling and green waste that is not being picked up at this time. We have had discussions with attorneys, with Patrick Munoz, who is our representative, our attorney, with Rutan and Tucker. Todd's aware of this as well. We have subsequently notified the, sent a letter to Republic that as of the 22nd, they will be in default if they don't provide services at that point. They have also sent us a letter saying that they would like to, in an effort to get things moving, they would like to be able to not have to, to co-mingle recyclable and regular waste. We indicated to them that we could not support anything deviating from our contract. However, I'm not going to recommend, if they had to do it in a short term, I'm certainly not going to recommend default if they have to, because it would expedite getting the trash picked up. But that's their decision and we won't, we won't accept any fines or whatever. We also notified them this morning that we were exercising our 24-hour notice or giving them 24-hour notice, that we are exploring options for alternative collection of residential. And that could be a number of ways, a number of cities are approaching it different ways, including self-haul, bringing in large trash bins and/or replacement haulers. This, for the record, we have approached a number of haulers. They, the Republic is negotiating with the Teamsters and a number of the haulers we've connected with have reservations because of their own staffing shortages and ability, capacity levels and/or their desire, because of their own employees being members of Teamsters, not to cross lines. We have had some potential opportunities. I won't go into those. But what they made, might entail, and some, we've had some nibbles, if you will. Nothing affirmative, but potentially some opportunities, and we are exploring those. We would have to come into separate contracts. There's a lot of complications there, because the, the alternate provider would expect to be paid. And the question is, we are still paying, you know, in the contract, Republic's still getting paid by the ratepayers. So there's a question of, is there refunds? And all, all those things would have to be, are there damages or whatnot? So we are having to work through a lot of those issues. But our focus is, if we have to, to try and get the trash picked up. Republic has indicated that they believe that negotiations are progressing. How we interpret that word, I don't know. I don't have any real answer to that. We are also exploring the, with the respective city attorneys, not just our cities, but the number of city attorneys, about the potential of going to court and seeking a action that would require return to work. However, based on that and precedent, the likelihood of that's an uphill push, because at this point, we can't really claim health and safety, but it hasn't even been a week at this point. So, and the likelihood is that the courts are typically, don't intervene until there really is multiple weeks or trash is piling up, et cetera. We don't have that situation yet, but we are exploring that opportunity and will continue to do so. I know that there are some other opportunities, like I say, that some other cities are exploring. We are in the forefront of those discussions with our own opportunities and we would certainly approach the city council, because we would have to execute a temporary contract or something along those sorts. In that case, we want to make sure we're doing this in sync with our city, with our attorney, et cetera, because it will affect our ability to recoup that cost or our ratepayers recoup that cost from the, and even who bills them with, with Republic. So there's a lot of issues here. We do have a clause that allows us to commandeer the equipment of Republic and try to do it that way. But I think our legal counsel advised the complications, liabilities are huge in that kind of manner. In other words, if we were to take over their trucks or, or whatever, we'd have to find the staff and then we take the liability of the truck, et cetera, once we assume that. So there's a lot of issues, but I wanted to advise the council that we are on top of the issue. We're working through it. My hope is, and Republic's hope is, that they get it done very quickly. I think we are continuing to put, like in the last three days or two days, we've sent them and a number of other cities have sent them letters and put the pressure on, on Republic. Republic has indicated to us that they are, it is, it is an issue strictly of cost, labor cost, that's driving this negotiation in pass. And that cause, that issue, this is what's being indicated to me. And if there's more, I certainly, I'm not party to the negotiations, so I'm declaring by secondhand. However, the issue is a short-term basis and my communication to them is I certainly couldn't approve nor would I even recommend a rate increase of any sort without some sort of thing. In other words, we're not going to pay more to get the same thing we were getting two weeks ago. That is not an acceptable ask of us. And Republic was communicated that. However, and for the record, the other Waste Management, Inc., and I don't know, I think it's, I'm not sure which other hauler, did in fact give rate increases to their employees, so that Republic is underpaying on a market level. So I'll be very honest, if we go out to bid right now, our costs would probably go up, because the, the market rate is higher now. And I'm pretty safe bet that those people who would bid on us are not going to bid at a lower rate. They're going to bid at what they're having to pay their rate, their employees now. This is a rather complicated issue. There's a lot going on. It's a very volatile issue. I have two meetings tomorrow before noon with, with attorneys and et cetera, and I will advise you. But at this point, it's not a negotiation that the city is involved in. All we're trying to do is ensure that our trash is picked up and we don't go through the holidays without trash pickup. So that's our focus. There is no action required of the council this time, but I did want to take this opportunity to apprise you. I know you're getting questions and certainly can take questions that I can answer. Again, I'm not party to the negotiations with Republic and their employees, but I can share where we're going with that. So with that, I can answer any questions.
How often are you talking to them? Is it a daily basis or?
I've talked to Republic three times in the last two days.
Yep.
I've talked to city managers five times in the last two days. And it is, and it started, and that started over the weekend as well. So I mean, it is not just the last couple of days, but more formal, everybody this weekend. It was sort of part and parcel over the weekend. It is, it is, again, I have not asked for a special closed session or anything, because there's no action required. But I'm advising you that potentially we could have some action taken. That could include even litigation and/or something along those lines, and we will keep you. So in the event we have to do an emergency closed session, we'll advise you accordingly. And Todd, is there anything you want to add? Did I, anything? Yeah, so our, we have a contract with Republic. It's called a Trash Solid Waste Franchise Agreement. There are certain steps you go through in this process. An initial force majeure period, things happen, they're not in breach. Then a time period in which we can take self-help, lack of a better term. Then a time period in which they're in default technically of the agreement. And then we have termination options and the others. So as soon as those time periods are triggered, we are following the language of the franchise agreement to make sure our rights are insured as soon as possible. Those are the letters referenced by Steve that have been going out, so we're tracking that. I would say right now, let's wait sort of until the end of the week to see how it plays out. At such a point in time, though, once people start missing their second round of trash pickup, it becomes more problematic and then we may have to take stronger action. And there are remedies, as outlined in the franchise agreement, as to what happens in that situation, which we will be obviously asserting at your direction. So stand by, I would say, as to the issue raised by the city manager about, you know, people not getting the service they paid for and all of that. That is an outstanding issue, which we will be dealing with. But if anybody's listening into the community and they have costs related to this, keep your receipts and we will see how that plays out.
Question?
Real quickly, the other thing is, we've advised and we are passing out any information that we receive. But Republic has indicated, and they are sending out robo-calls to all those who should have had their trash picked up about what they should do with their cans as we receive information. And we are not going to publish our own information, because we don't want to interpret anything that they're doing. We want it to be specifically their information that they're, they're providing us. So with that being said, they should have received robo-calls. Any questions or inquiries, we certainly encourage you to call, the customers to call Republic. It's their responsibility to pick up the trash and they're under contract with us to do so. It's not our responsibility to, it's our responsibility to make sure they're doing so, but it's not our responsibility to pick up the trash. So if there are questions or problems, et cetera. But the, the large bulky item has been suspended. I don't believe that'll be picked up for some time until they get the resolution of it. But we're focusing now on residential trash. Secondarily, we're focusing on recyclables and green waste. And again, for the record, there are commercial areas and those areas that would involve the highest potential for sanitation issues, restaurants, et cetera, are being picked up. As of this morning, I saw them out there.
Thank you guys very much for a very thorough report and for staying on top of this, really. Very, very well done. Questions?
Question. The incredibly wishful hope that Republic has of us co-mingling and breaching our contract, which is not going to happen, isn't that in, isn't that, what's the word I'm looking for? Isn't that a violation of what the state is requiring? I think, don't they have to be, even though the tonnage is minimal? Isn't that something that they are not even really supposed to be saying?
I believe that they have, they're, we've told them, the city managers have indicated very much that, that they need to talk to Cal Recycle and have waivers or something along those lines, because, and Cal Recycle is talking to them about that, so we're not involved in those discussions. But we will not be held responsible for them co-mingling. That's, that's the issue. At the same time, in the event that I can get the trash picked up, we're not, and if they do this for like a week, I'm not going to say that we cancel the contract for that. But we are, we're not supporting it and we're saying, we're not, we're not condoning or endorsing them doing anything that would violate the terms of the agreement.
Understood. Thank you.
Yeah, and other cities are doing?
Yeah, and other cities are doing different things. Huntington Beach declared tonight, I believe, a state of emergency and they put out big bins somewhere in the city where people can throw their stuff in and it's all being mixed. And they're taking the argument that the state of emergency occasioned by the public health and safety impacts of non-trash pickup supersede the separate your waste, green waste, recyclable, solid waste, normal stuff rules. And therefore, they shouldn't be dinged by Cal Recycle and that's the, the natural progression of things. So as this proceeds, we will be dealing with that type of issue. I'm just saying there's, people are trying to deal with that exact issue. Sadly, Cal Recycle is sort of winking, saying, we understand, but they won't put anything in writing.
Understood, thank you.
Comment or question? So, so I have my, my bigger issue when I think about the trash sitting there for two weeks is the health, the health issues related to rodents and the, you know, different vector diseases that can come from our rodents being there.
That's your world.
Pardon?
That's your world, right?
That's my world. So, yes, it is. And tomorrow we have a meeting, so I'm wondering, just from the whole force majeure and everything, how does that play in if we can, can we, I like what Huntington Beach did by putting out the can, the bigger bin so that the residents can come and dump their trash and, and can we somehow implement the fact that this is a health hazard from the point of view of a vector transmission by allowing the trash to stay there for several weeks? Is that something we can?
Absolutely, I will say, because those, well, in Yorba Linda, we're pretty much doing the same thing. We're putting up bins where people can be able to bring stuff because they don't want it to be able to build up right in their front yards, right? And then we're going to have Republic or someone else come pick up those.
I would caution, you have to arrange for someone else to pick them up. And we do not have anyone else right now that will pick them up. We do not have a contract clause that allows for bins to be placed, nor do we have a place for them to be placed.
Right.
So that's sort of problematic. As far as getting a health and safety issue, that again is something that's discussed and we've talked to the attorneys about it, they're preparing the paperwork, but typically the courts have said it, if you've, you've probably read about like cases in the East Coast, et cetera, where it's taken weeks, weeks and weeks before trash piles up, before the courts will intervene and declare the health and safety. The county health department has not expressed it yet and they are, you know, the health officer for the county. And so they, we, we are approaching them as well about the opportunity and we're building in the case. We also are bootlegging in the discussion of COVID and potential transmission of any, of any sort of infectants, if you will.
So I have a, our meeting tomorrow, so I'll, I'll bring it up and ask if they've addressed that or if they think they're going to have to address it.
Any other council member comments or questions? Is this something that we should think about adjusting the language in our contract for future instances of this where we see, oh, it's going to be, we should make sure that after a week, we have the ability to bring in bins or do make some?
Real quickly, any contract amendments would require both parties to, to agree to it, obviously. So our contract extends through 2030, so it's a long-term agreement that has been in place for a number of years. We certainly can approach anybody about a negotiation and, and trying to do an amendment, but because we want it doesn't mean it will get necessarily incorporated into that. And Todd, is that?
Right, you know, and, and frankly, the contract is sort of working in this circumstance. I mean, it's allowing us now to be able to self-help. You have to give a couple of days at the beginning where, you know, something goes on strike, you can't hold them accountable immediately. So I think the timing in this, I mean, obviously, it's not good, it's horrible for the city, but things are moving pretty quickly. Sure, we can always cut off a few days here and there, but it will get where we need to go with this contract language, I believe.
So I, I don't know if I mentioned the cities involved because we're talking a large percentage of the population in Orange County, Anaheim, Fullerton, Yorba Linda, Placentia, Brea, Costa Mesa, Fountain Valley, Huntington Beach.
Santa Ana?
No, not Santa Ana. Santa Ana is not transitioned yet from Waste Management, they have just switched the contract. And Villa Park. But if you count up, that's hundreds of thousands of bins. And capacity issues are real as far as alternate providers. So it is not somebody just stepping away thinking, it is literally, some of these providers, we understand, were having trouble anyway, just meeting their regular workload. So it is, it is a challenge. So one of the things that we're discussing, and I just, for warning, is that we're, we don't have Saturday pickup, but potentially we could do a Saturday, which would allow capacity for some of these firms to step in and do it. And my feeling is, and my recommendation is, we do go on a Saturday because trash pickup is more important than a Saturday, a little bit of noise while the truck comes through. So I think that's something that we're exploring and that's something, you know, it may make a difference about getting some alternate providers stepping in.
So did you mention a drop dead date as far as like when the force majeure ends or what?
The 22nd of December.
So after the 22nd, if there's not a resolution between the Teamsters and, and Republic, then we can take a different course of action without being in default?
We can take a different approach, but we have to have a different, an answer, if you will. Just because the date hits, doesn't mean you necessarily have a provider that can do something. But we can, we can declare default of the contractor, which allows us different opportunities. But again, you still have that same issue, what's capacity out there?
Yeah, I think we should probably look into that ahead of time to be prepared so that if that date comes, we're not then scrambling on the 22nd.
We are actually, potentially, there may be the opportunity for this Saturday pickup. We, we have already exercised our notice of 24 hours. So if things work, we may be able to come back and say that this Saturday, we're doing it. So we are already approaching, but again, our answers are pretty common that either capacity or we don't want to cross a picket line.
All right.
Thank you.
Best we can find is, would be good. Thanks. Okay, thank you for the report. Moving on to mayor and council member matters, we.
That's number 10.
That's 10.
Oh, I'm sorry. You have my notes.
Okay, so item number 10, the resolution to council of the city of Villa Park, expressing support of the Brandwang Mendoza Tri-Parties and Land Use Initiative to amend Article 11 of the Constitution of the State of California to make zoning and land use community affairs and not of state interest. Is anybody from the public that wanted to comment on this?
We received nothing.
Okay. Do we have a staff report or?
No, this was an item that was actually requested by the mayor.
Right.
Put on, so I reported to the mayor.
So I, I did mention this earlier, this is a constitutional amendment that's been put forth out there. I'm, my guess is that we're all in favor of this, but I, I don't know. So I know that we've, we've expressed support previously as a resolution for local control, but this is a very specific amendment or initiative to get an amendment put into the Constitution of the State of California. So do I have any comments or questions from council members?
Comment? Unless, did you have one? So one of the things I'd like to make aware is the, the naming of this, this was not, so the, the three individuals that initiated this, they did not come up with the name and in fact, the name is chosen for them. And so I think it's a little bit misrepresenting what it actually is for. So I hope that the residents, if they're listening, recognize that, that this is actually something that's going to help our communities by retaining the local control for land use and whatnot. And this is something that I think is extremely important for us as a community and other communities, because right now it would destroy the complexion of our, of our city if we did not have the opportunity to put this on the ballot in 2022.
Comment? I asked for a closed session hearing about this matter because it potentially involved litigation and other issues several months ago and we had it. I asked for a subsequent one since then, none of them have been had. Can we have that again for the next meeting, please?
We did have two, Councilman took correct. We had two, this was the first month, we have not had a closed session with regards to it. So we did have one in, we had one in October because I was not able to attend, actually. And I was able to attend the first one, so I'm very familiar with, we did have two. We have not had one subsequently to that, you're correct. But we were given direction, I understood that we were given direction, we're working on direction of that, that was provided at that time.
I'd like to reconvene on this as soon as possible, please, thank you.
Okay, do we have a moat, any other comments?
Questions?
The motion on this matter?
Also move the staff recommendation.
Second?
Second.
Good, just to clarify, we, it's not, is it, there's no staff recommendation, but?
It's the recommendation.
Thank you, the proposal, I appreciate it. Okay, we have a motion in a second, we go ahead and vote?
Passes 5-0.
Excellent, thanks Steve. And then we have item 11, individual council member information items and/or required attendance reports. Starts us off with the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District.
My meetings are tomorrow and Thursday, so since this is only the second Tuesday instead of the fourth.
Right.
No meeting.
Likewise, Orange County Sanitation District meets tomorrow. Orange County Fire Authority?
One thing to report.
One thing to report from the last meeting, there were several items, most of which of significance were in closed session involving contract negotiations with Local 3631 and, and other entities or, or at least somehow, some way affecting 3631, which obviously is the largest union, the firefighters' union, but there are other OSHA-related unions also. But the, the one topic that I wanted to bring up is that the fire chief fantasy had his contract renewed and did receive a raise and by majority vote, did receive a vote of confidence from, by the sheer fact of the renewal of his contract at the last meeting. That's really all the significance. We are meeting again this Thursday and that's all I have, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Orange County Library Advisory Board was scheduled to meet Monday, we, that has been moved to January 20th. The City Schools Advisory Board also has been set for next month. Do we have anything for Law Enforcement Advisory Board?
No meeting until spring or early, I should say, late, late winter, early spring.
Then we're on Villa Park Community Services Foundation, Robbie?
I was unable to attend last month's meeting because of my surgery, but I, I think it's evident that over the course of the last couple of weeks, I think all the council members, as well as the city, had a phenomenal time at the boat parade as well as the, the Santa tour. I have to commend our foundation and, and every, everybody that participated in those two events. I mean, we saw groups of children come up to the fire engine, it has never been that large in terms of group size in the past. And it was really fun to see that and really warm, warmed my heart to see that, that many people come up and enjoy it. So, but our meeting this month is dark, so we won't have another meeting until January.
Thank you for the report. Housing Legislative Committee?
No meeting.
And then Bridges at Kramer?
We had a meeting on December 8th, but I was unable to attend.
Okay, and then Senior Citizens Advisory Committee?
Same, no, no meeting.
Okay, so then it's time for us to hear individual council member information items, starting with Councilmember Colacott.
No meetings.
Okay.
I'm good.
You're good?
Uh, then congratulate the two of you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and thank you, and congratulations to you. One thing that I would like to recommend just for moving forward into next year, or perhaps two things, is the elimination of the housing committee as it met virtually not at all, and that's handled typically at the council level, which I think is appropriate. I'm not criticizing those involved, I'm just saying, by just matter of the significance of the, the matter, it is being held at the council level. And then the reinstitution of the infrastructure management and/or engineering committee, forgive me, I don't have the exact name. I think we have some really talented professionals and given the acrimony that we heard from the community about resurfacing and infrastructure projects within our community, why not leverage that resource again? I, I don't think we have an overwhelming amount of committees that our, our, our city staff is having to deal with or city council members would have to attend. And I just think it's, it's a, a very valuable resource that's being untapped. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Crystal?
So wanted to say thank you to Sheriff, Fire, City Staff, Foundation for the amazing events Forest, who, you know, I'm sure is probably having a well-deserved break. It was a fabulous, fun event. Wanted to report on the Winter Wonderland as well. That was amazing, I think. We were under budget, so we budgeted for 15,000. It came in at 11,739. The concerns that were expressed the first year that we did it on a lower budget were completely 100% addressed and controlled and handled this year. And that was primarily the fact that there was very little control the first year on the snow, since the snow did not have a boundary set to it. So although people still had fun, it made it difficult to control the, you know, random snowball that might fly across and, and hit somebody in the head. So this year with the fencing, and we added 20 tons of snow instead of the 10 tons, that was completely remediated and there were no snowball fights, with the exception of, I do have to give a shout out to several Villa Park Little League, past and present, families and, and children because we did a couple of things. One, we made the snow area age-limiting. So the first hour was for the, the littles and then the second hour was for like three to six years old. And that really worked out really well. Not only were the families very accommodating and understanding, but it made it very easy to control and the kids had fun. There was nobody that was crying unless they were being dragged off the snow because they didn't want to leave, but no random snowball in the head. And then the older kids, it was very helpful and I really appreciate their help. They really wanted that massive snowball fight. And so at the end of the night, it really cleared out right about 7:30, I'd say, it was pretty much done. And so I told the children, look, if you guys help us take down the fences, then you guys can have your snowball fight. So those fences came down in probably seven minutes. And then once everyone was cleared, they had a stellar, in their words, snowball fight. And so that was, that was an awesome event to see and it helped break down the snow because the gentleman said that the 20 tons would take a long time to, to melt, so that definitely helped. And then also a big thank you to our community partners who came out. So we had the Rotary, we had Boy Scouts, and then we also had Serrano Elementary, and so they were doing can, hot, hot chocolate cotton candy. And the cookie decorating and the ice skating went great as well. So it's a really easy event to, to, to run. The, the event, the, the people entertain themselves, they do not have to be, there's no program to follow, there's no, you know, dress rehearsals, there's no, you know, come up on the stage at such and such a time, there's no judges. It, the event entirely entertains itself. So other than the couple of hours for setup, that's it. I know Mike Knowles, of course, big shout out, a big thank you to him for all of his efforts and, and work. So as far as numbers go, I was concerned, the first year we had about 300 people total. And this year we had, just for the ice skating, because that's the one we had, the waivers, we had about, well, 220 that signed the waivers. Everyone went on the snow, but not everyone went on the ice skating. So I'd say you probably had about another 50 to 70, 60 that did not go ice skating. So I'd say the numbers were really comparable first year, second year, and I was really happy with that because I had some concerns with COVID, that we, it wouldn't be as well attended, but it was. So unfortunately, I didn't take any pictures at the height of the event at 6:00 PM. My phone was dead, so didn't really get to snapshot the, the images of how packed it was, but it was a phenomenal event and I thank the council for allowing the addition of that this year. And I'm really, really hoping that the foundation will consider taking this over as there were several, well, everyone actually said how great it was and how happy they were and these are the things that they're going to remember and it was an awesome event, so that was it.
Yes, that's exactly why we have a Community Services Foundation.
It is.
To host such events and sponsor them.
So, thanks very much, Crystal, appreciate it. I wanted to give a huge shout out to, this is really a time of year when the Community Services Foundation shines. They, they do put on our Santa tour and the boat parade, that the level of activity that goes on and their outreach to our citizens is huge. And this year in particular, such a phenomenal job done, so many people out there that really brought the community out into the streets to be able to be together. I know we've all been really itching for it and being, being safe, but being able to be together and be part of our community was, was excellent. The, the Winter Wonderland was fantastic and I, I wholeheartedly agree, I hope this is something that we continue and. is something that we continue, and that Community Services can fold into that part of the, the sanator. It really, I was there as part of the interact and Rotary booths that were there, that, so it was actually the, the High Schoolers Interact supported Rotary by doing the hot chocolate sales, almost 200 hot chocolates were sold, so that was excellent. I think we had planned for 400 just to be safe, but the Boy Scouts did great with the cotton candy, going out and getting it to the kids, and, and then the Serrano booth with, with the candy decoration, they had little containers where you could choose different decorations, and it was a huge, everything there went so well. Crystal, fantastic job, and I think it's one of those things where it brings the community together, we get to all participate, have some fun, snowball fighting and just playing with the snow, it was just so well-done. And I just want to close by wishing everybody Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, I hope that everybody stays safe. I want to also make sure that people, I know this is a time when everybody's going away on, on vacations, we take advantage of our sheriffs, offering to watch over your house as you go away, just let them know that, that's something that they'll make sure that they, they check on your place while it's being, while you're gone, and you just need to call them. But happy holidays to everybody, and to all residents out there. With that, I'll go ahead and adjourn, sorry.
I did want to compliment Crystal on her year as a mayor. It was a most difficult year. She came in with the, having to deal with the COVID restrictions, and also on her plate was the development of an, a housing element update, which was something we didn't want to do. It was something that was mandated by the state, we had to do it, and there were no good solutions. But we were able, through her leadership, we were able to cobble something together and submit it to the state, and not only did, working with our very capable city manager, we got that into the state, not on the deadline, but we actually got it in a week early, which many cities are still struggling with figuring out how they can deal with their RINA allocations. So my compliments to you on that. Going forward, we're going to have a real challenge, although we've submitted a housing element update, we still have to get past the state approval, then we're going to have to go into rezoning properties to implement that housing element update. There's going to be a lot of discussions with the residents to help them understand what this is all about, we're going to have to work with the owner of the property, the Orange County Water District, and potentially contractors and residents to help them understand, again, what this is, this is, and figure out a way that, how can we make this, make some lemonade out of this, you know, this horrible lemon called the RINA allocations and our housing element update. So congratulations, and I think we've got still a significant challenge ahead of us over the new year, and good luck, Chad.
Thanks very much. We will now adjourn until the next regular city meeting on January 25th, 2022, next year, at 6:30 PM. Thank you for participating, have a safe and good evening.